This?
I don't.
No, that's not it. What's this?
Hi folks, I realize we're at the top of the hour. I'm just gonna give, I'm waiting one or two more minutes to let members of the public join and also Erin Hickenin, one of our commissioners. So we'll just stay tuned for a moment or two.
Oh, now I've got all this stuff on.
Cheryl?
Yes?
Erin is gonna be about 10 to 15 minutes late.
Okay, I think, I think it'll be okay to go ahead and get started, although I do want Erin to hear all of our agenda items.
You do.
Well, actually, actually, maybe I'll get some advice from Eli and Trevor on this. Should we go ahead? We do have some minutes to review, but we will have a quorum.
Yeah, I think it's fine to get started. The main thing is the agenda items. You want him to hear everything. So I think there's enough other things that you can be doing in the meantime.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'll call the meeting to order then. It's August 18th, City of Trinidad Planning Commission Meeting. And I'd like to ask for a roll call, if I may.
Commissioner Kelly?
I am present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Here.
Commissioner Stockness?
Present.
And Commissioner Hickenin is going to be a few minutes late, so we'll note when he comes onto the meeting. Sounds good. All right, the first item we have today is approval of the minutes from the June 16th Planning Commission Meeting. And I'm going to go ahead and open first to public comments. If there are any public comments on the meeting minutes from the 16th. I do not see any hands raised or public comments at this time. If I missed anyone on the phone, please speak up. And by the way, let me just double check to make sure we have folks that are able to call in, because I know we've been having some problems with Zoom. Eli, do you know if that's been, that's been figured out, right? The issue we had with Zoom and people calling in by phone and getting kind of bumped out? Or do you know?
All I know is that for the last meeting, we took care of it, but I can't guarantee you for right now. I'm hoping it'll be fine.
Okay, all right. Well, hopefully, if anybody knows of anyone who's calling in and having any issues, please put it in the chat. And, and we'll work on it as quickly as we can. It's been a bit of an issue for a few folks, and we don't want anyone who wants to participate to be, to not be able to. All right, so I see no comments from the public. Any comments, commissioners, on the meeting minutes from the 16th? Diane? Please, go ahead.
So on page five of six, you and Tom made the motion to delay action. Do you remember that?
I do, yeah.
Okay, okay, because I couldn't remember. I know I was really involved. I didn't want, I wanted to have another meeting. Okay.
All right, that's, I'm not 100% sure, but that's, that's what I recall, Diane.
Okay, well, maybe Tom knows.
Do you remember Tom?
Yeah, I wanted to have another meeting.
Okay, well, yeah, we all did, but I wanted it in two weeks and not a month. Okay, that's all.
Oh, right, yeah, I think I said the same.
So that, that's what I was thinking about.
I see. All right, thank you. Any other corrections or comments on the minutes? Otherwise, any motions to approve?
Okay, I'll move to approve.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the minutes from the June 16th meeting are approved into the record. And that brings us to items from the floor. So at this time, we ask members of the public who wish to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda to raise hands. And we allot about three minutes for comments. The items should be addressed to the commission at large and not individual commissioners, and we will somewhat limit our comments and responses since the items are not agendized. But please, at this time, raise your hand if you'd like to speak about something not on the agenda. All right, I'm scrolling through and I see no hands raised at this time. I'm speaking very slowly to, to get us to 10 to 15 minutes past the hour, since we're waiting for Erin. But yeah, so there's no comments from the floor. All right, so we're going to move on to the agenda items. And as I mentioned, I do want Commissioner Hakenin to be able to hear the staff report for the first item, which is the hassle quest. Design review, use permit, grading permit, and coastal development permit. But what I can say at this time is that Commissioner Johnson will be recusing himself from this discussion. And Richard, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, or if you'd like me to cover that, or?
I'll just make a couple of real quick statements as to the rationale justification. I am currently working with the applicant for remodeling a portion of my home. And with that in mind, I consulted with the planner, Trevor, and with Russ Gans, the city attorney, to get clarification on this particular set of circumstances. And I want to thank both of them for weighing in, got a lot of good information from them. It falls into several different categories. But I, and I won't take up a lot of time, but since one commissioner isn't here, I'll take two minutes. The, I don't believe that there is a, to the first order, a direct conflict of interest, financial or otherwise, as defined by the city attorney. And with the exception of two very short conversations that I had with the applicant yesterday, the 17th, there has been no discussion about this project. So those are the two ex parte conversations that I, I can disclose at this point. I don't have a personal relationship with the applicant under what is defined as common law with, with, with one exception, and that is that one could, one could argue that my vote, one way or the other, on this project might impact my remodeling project depending upon how the applicant might react to that vote. However, having said all of that, this is a complicated project. And there are several issues where I'm sure we're going to get, you will get into it with respect to current analyses and rationale that the Coastal Commission doesn't necessarily agree with entirely at this point. And so with, with the complication of the project and coupled with the fact that this is appealable to the Coastal Commission, it was advised that, that I should proceed with more, that this should be a more reason to proceed with caution. And I would agree with that. And I would not want my participation to be a factor or an excuse for a Coastal Commission appeal. And, and then finally, just one quick word from the city's code of ethics. And I'll just quote partially from the code of ethics that when a public official participates in a decision, does not fall within the specific statutory guidelines for conflict of interest, but still does not look or feel right, the public official probably has encountered the appearance of impropriety. So with that in mind, and indicating that, or I, and further saying that public officials need to step aside for the good of the community, even though there may be no technical conflict exists. So I, I just want to be squeaky clean. And in this case, would love to participate, but don't feel it would be in the best interest of, of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. And yes, you hold yourself to the highest ethics. We appreciate that and understand your, your desire to recuse yourself. All right, so let me see if there's anything else we want to cover. Otherwise, I may call for a short period of waiting, because we do want Erin to be able to hear this. Oh, I guess one thing I can say, well, no, I don't even want to cover that without Erin here. Okay. So I'm going to just suggest that everybody mute yourselves, get a cup of coffee, or your beverage of choice, non-alcoholic, of course, and we will, we will go into a holding pattern.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Oh, never mind. That since Erin wasn't here, and we didn't approve the agenda, that we could have modified the agenda and moved staff reports and future agenda items to the front, but here, we're fine.
That's a good point, and I was about to say the same, that we could talk about future agenda items, but, but there he is, the man of the hour.
I'm here, apologies.
No worries. It happens. We're just glad to see your shining face, and we are, we are working on agenda item number one.
Okay.
And that is, yeah, that's the hassle question, design review, use permit, grading permit, and coastal development permit to demolish an existing 1,585 square foot, two-story, split-level home. It's one-bedroom, single-family residence and replace it with a new 2,335 square foot, two-story, one-bedroom residence and approximately the same footprint. Upgrades to the septic system are also included, and this property is located at 150 Scenic Drive. What I was going to disclose, and we, for those of you who just joined, including Commissioner Hakenin, Commissioner Johnson has recused himself, and he went through his, his rationale for that. I just wanted to disclose that, as I believe I'm supposed to, that I drove by the property today. So I drove down to 150 Scenic. I did not walk. I didn't want to trespass, so I didn't walk around on the property, but I did look at the property and, and I may have some comments about that later on, but I did want to let everyone know that I did that. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Hopkins.
Well, if we're, if we're, I've been to the site. I looked at it also, okay? Just wanted to let everybody know.
Oh, thank you. I was going to ask if anyone else had visited. So yes, it's good to disclose that. And then as we make our comments, if there's anything we, we share that is related to that, we can make that public. So okay, with that, I am ready to, oh, sorry, Diane? Did you want to add something?
I, I didn't go to the site because I don't drive on Scenic Drive, but I went to the site probably four years ago, when they did the converted. So I know where the site is. I just couldn't do it. I just can't drive those roads anymore.
No worries. There was no requirement whatsoever. I just, I volunteered.
But I did read the plans and all the reports, so I, I know what's going on.
Excellent, as always. All right. Trevor? Are you ready to give us a staff report?
Thank you, yes. So yeah, so this project involves removal of an existing residence and construction of a new residence somewhat larger in approximately the same footprint. The site is approximately an acre. It's located on the southern end of town. There's one property between this one and the Ranteria property. And it's located right on the coastline. There is an existing small ADU on the upper portion of the site that was converted from a garage. And then the existing primary residence was constructed around the 60s, so, so prior to the Coastal Act and prior to our existing regulations. And it is in a deteriorated condition at this point, so the applicants are proposing to rebuild it. It will include a 23, little over 2,300 square foot, one-bedroom, two-story residence. And some substantial areas of covered porch, balconies, decks, as well as a new, new carport on the existing driveway. As well as part of this project, a new pretreatment unit will be added to the septic system. And the project also includes after-the-fact approval for a new septic system, a repair that was put in, in 2017. So I'll talk about that a little bit as, as I go through my staff report. Referrals were sent to city staff and Coastal Commission for this project. Building official didn't have any issues at this time. The applicant has been working with Division of Environmental Health on, on the septic system. It was determined that rather than expanding the septic system, that the pretreatment unit would be a better solution here. Because it's really, because it's close to the bluff that treats water quality a little bit better. So, and they have no issues with the project. The city engineer and myself asked for some additional information, so an addendum to the original geologic report was submitted. That information went to the Coastal Commission staff, and we had put this on the March agenda for hearing. But just before that occurred, Coastal Commission staff called and said they had concerns about the project, and so we continued it. They wrote a letter. The letter comes from a coastal analyst. Although she conferred with the staff geologist on that letter, but the letter didn't come from a geologist. Another geologic report, what I'm calling geologic response in the staff report, was submitted that seems to address the Coastal Commission's concerns and comments. However, our local staff person did send an email saying they didn't have time to really review this in detail, then including the new information. And are still have concerns and don't think that the city can make the findings. However, when she made that statement, she didn't have my staff report, or the analysis that's in the staff report, or the conditions of approval. So you know, without knowing more, at this point, I disagree with that. But they did recommend delaying the project and the applicant meeting with Coastal Commission staff to see if they can come up with some, some solutions to the Coastal Commission's concerns. I believe that the applicant would still like to move forward at this point, but I'll let, I'll let him address that when he has a chance to talk. So the project, the parcel is zone both SE and SR, so suburban residential and special environment. Where the residence is proposed, the existing residence is, and the proposed residence is in the SE zone. And so that's intended to really be in areas of hazards or sensitive habitat that should minimize development in those areas. A use permit is required for residents within the SE zone. Because the existing residence was built prior to the zoning ordinance, no use permit was ever issued. And when a use requires a use permit, it's considered a non-conforming use. And so that's why the, the new residence, the approval includes a use permit, so it will no longer be non-conforming. And I go through some of the, the density requirements setbacks. Aren't as applicable in the SE zone, because it's really intended to be developed based on limitations on the lot. And the house will be slightly above the 2,000 square foot guideline. But it is within the floor, floor area ratio that the planning commission uses, even including both residences. And the structure does meet height, parking setbacks, and those kind of requirements. And there is some grading that is required for the project. I believe that even if this, the replacement residence was in the exact same footprint, there'd still be some grading required, because the foundation would need to be redone. The existing foundation is was not built very well, and is, you know, there's some tilting and movement there, so it would have to be redone anyway. About 25 cubic yards of material will need to be moved to redo the foundation. Fill and grading. The city engineer has reviewed the project and concurred with the findings that have to be made for issuing a grading ordinance, which is that the project will not adversely affect drainage or lateral support of other properties in the area, and will not be detrimental to the health, public health, safety, or general welfare, and is not in conflict with the provisions of the city's ordinances. Now, the site is already connected to utilities, and those won't change. It'll be connected to existing utilities. Exterior, exterior materials and colors are shown in the plans and have been chosen to blend with and complement the surroundings, primarily including redwood, glass, and naturally earth-toned colors. Views are not anticipated to be an issue. The site is not prominently visible from any public viewing points. There aren't any residences located behind it where this might block views, so views aren't expected to be an issue. Notices were sent to neighbors, so they do have an opportunity to comment. So because of the sensitivity of the SE zone, it has a number of requirements that are unique to that zone. And that includes considerations for the tsunami hazard area. The project is above the tsunami run-up zone. The project does not involve structures located on or below a bluff. And that was one of the comments from the Coastal Commission. But it was determined that the bluff face is located below the residence. It's sitting on, the residence is sitting on the same terrace as Cheryl's house. And so that project was approved about five years ago. And that's the, that is the coastal bluff. There are some existing shoreline protection structures there that were permitted after the 82, 83 El Nino year, where there was damage, substantial damage all along the coast. And those, it's, it's pretty solidly built in there and still remains structurally sound. Requirements for slopes near bluffs. So I think the section A might be the most problematic, where structures are required to be located at least 30 feet from the bluff. But the existing structure is actually located closer to the bluff than the proposed structure, so the existing structure would be a non, considered a non-conforming structure. The non-conforming regulations allow structures to be altered, repaired, or extended, as long as the degree of non-conformity is not increased. Although if a building is destroyed, it would have to meet current codes. The planning commission has consistently interpreted that to mean destroyed by an act of God, as opposed to, you know, something that's reconstructed. And that's because the city didn't want these things, these non-conforming structures just sitting around deteriorating, and want them to be able to be repaired and replaced and fixed up. And so the new structure will be about 20 feet at its closest point from the edge of the bluff. So that is not increasing the degree of non-conformity. In addition, the geologic reports have found that that setback is adequate to to preserve the integrity of the structure over its 75-year lifetime. That bluff retreat, sea level rise, those sorts of issues are not going to threaten it over that period of time. And also, there really isn't suitable locations on the lot to move the structure or build it in another location for a number of reasons. The, the rocky outcrops, existing improvements, you know, trying to minimize vegetation disturbance and soil movement. All those kind of regulations all point to building a new residence in the same footprint is the most, most feasible and environmentally friendly option. So section B, the project, because it's located in the existing footprint, that's minimizes the amount of grading and disturbance, so it conforms with that. The structure, there might be portions of the slope greater than 20% that the structure is located on. However, no new roads or driveways are needed. The construction area will need to be staked and flagged prior to construction, and there won't be allowed to be disturbance or construction materials or activities outside of that area. That's been included as a condition of approval. The, the site is covered by an existing open space easement. That open space easement may need to be modified slightly, I think, primarily where the entry porch is. Is an area that is currently covered by the open space easement that is new disturbance, so that might need to be adjusted, but it's that section's already complied with. Let's see, there's no streams. It's not within a trey study area. Open space protection, like I said, it's already covered by an open space easement. We are requiring a public access easement be granted along the shoreline, so from the high tide line to the first line of vegetation. So that has been included as a condition of approval to meet those requirements. And then determination of geologic feasibility, that's the geologic report. Oh, I also want to mention, in terms of that public access easement, the, the site plan shows the property line going to the US Meander Line, which in some areas is above the bluff and above some of the shoreline protection structures. But the Meander Line, you know, is kind of a, it's sort of a leftover line from when the, the city properties were first described back in the 1800s. And from my understanding, what we found is that all these properties along the shoreline actually do extend all the way down to the high tide line. Not, not the Meander Line. So like I said, the geologic report was prepared that complies with the requirements of this section, as well as an addendum and a response to the Coastal Commission's comments. Slope stability, geologic hazards. It is, the project is located in an area that's mapped as It is, the project is located in an area that's mapped as unstable and questionably stable. Coastal Act requires that development be located. In areas to minimize risk to life and property. And I believe the the geologic reports and addendum and response address those hazards. There is, you know, it is subject to some slope instability. And the foundation is is designed not to stabilize a potential slide, but to. Allow some movement and keep the house stable. But it's not expected that it would be unstable, a quantitative slope. Stability assessment was completed showing that the site where the house is located does meet the required. Factors of safety. The site is well above where even the most extreme scenario for sea level rise would occur. And it is also in an area that wouldn't be expected to have significant amounts of bluff retreat due to. The prevalence of of rock structure that's that's located on the lot. As well as along the bluff, and that's even considering. Without the shoreline protection structures that exist. It would still be considered stable. One of the things that the coastal commission brought up that was new was. Mentioning that the existing shoreline protection structure shouldn't be allowed to. Be used for for the proposed structure. And, you know, again, this project is very similar to the twenty scenic drive project. And the regulations haven't changed. In that case, they were allowed to continue to rely on their existing gabions. And and there was no mention that those should be removed. In this case, the the shoreline protection is is cemented into the existing rocks. It would be. Quite destructive to actually have to remove those, so the city does not see. Any benefit to considering having those removed, even though they're not necessarily necessary for this project. The septic system. So when the property was sold in twenty sixteen, city staff, we evaluated the septic system under the OWTS management program. It was a very undersized system with only about five hundred gallons of of septic tank and a leach pit. And D H reviewed the site and determined that they couldn't design a repair there, that it would take engineering and soil testing. So we just required that it be monitored and maintained more closely. The applicant voluntarily in twenty seventeen had a new system designed and engineered. And installed that under permit from Division of Environmental Health. I talked, I've talked a little bit about permitting and exemptions. And repairs for septic systems, when we've been talking about ADUs. And so the city hasn't ever required coastal development permits for septic repairs. Those are permitted by D E H. Maintenance and repairs are generally exempt under the coastal act. However, there are some exceptions to those except exemptions. For example, if they're close to a bluff. And so this is in a sensitive location, and so city staff is. Proposing that this being after the fact coastal development permit for the repairs, the new system that was. Put in 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 twenty seventeen under a repair permit. And then in addition for this project, we are also requiring that a pre-treatment unit be. Added to the system to further protect. And the geologic report also addressed the location of the septic system, its impacts on on the bluff. And found that it would not have any impacts and that it is in a, in a stable location. No new landscaping is provided as part of this project. The design review and view protection findings, as usual, are written in a manner to allow approval. But if the public or the planning presents. Alternative information or if the planning commission feels differently, those findings should be reworded accordingly. And there's also the use permit findings that I mentioned because. Because of the residents located in the special environment zone. Again, those those findings are written in a manner to allow approval. See staff believes that those findings can be made with the information that we have. Based on the analysis in the staff report, based on the application materials, including the geologic information. As well as the conditions of approval. And the planning commission, you have several alternatives if you feel that. So staff recommendation is for approval of the project. But you do have several alternatives. You could add conditions to address any concerns. You can delay action. To obtain further information or deny the project if you feel one or more of the findings can't be made. There are a number of conditions of approval in this staff report that you haven't seen before. These are conditions we haven't included for projects in the city before. These are based on comments from coastal commission staff. You know, based on the the potential hazards and instability of the site. So even though the geologists found that. It should be stable and shouldn't be subject to hazards. You know, some, something could happen unforeseen, and so these conditions address that in terms of. You know, something happens to the house, the the. Property owner is liable for all cleanup. And will not hold anybody else liable. If the house becomes uninhabitable or if if bluff retreat does occur. Then the site will need to be reassessed or the house removed. I did, I did want to change the wording a little bit of condition twelve. So that's in the event that the edge of the bluff recedes within ten feet. Of the residence or other improvements, and I would change that to. In the event the edge of the bluff recedes to within ten feet of the foundation or five feet from other improvements. Then then the site will need to be reevaluated with a geotechnical investigation. And continuing with the rest of it. And that's because the existing septic tank is, is right around ten feet now. And so. And we already have a geologic evaluation at that distance, so. And that, and then finally, the applicant must disclose all these conditions and requirements to any future. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, what I'd like to do is, actually, before I ask the commissioners to, if they have any questions. Should we, is the applicant or the applicant's architect, did you want to add any quick comments about this? I didn't know if, hi.
Yeah, hi, my name is Julian Berg. I'm the architect on the project, and you might remember I gave a presentation on it last time. So do you want, do you think I should walk through?
I, I, I think Trevor's covered it fairly well, and you did a great job last time. Maybe just if there's anything that's changed that you want to bring to our attention for just, you know, a minute or two. And then if Mr. Hasselquist has anything he'd like to add, I just wanted to give you guys a chance to say a couple of things before we. We get into all our, 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 our questions.
Well, first off, I have to thank Trevor for her extensive report and just attention to detail and. Her presentation. It's really been helpful for us to have her guidance through the project and. Just want to thank her again, because it's not an easy position to be in, we realize a lot of the times and. We couldn't have gotten to this point without her and help from your staff. I, I don't have a whole lot to add to my presentation. We didn't change the design. Since we last spoke. We did do some modifications to the site plan after working with Giovanni, the geologist, to. We honed in on the exact location of the septic system and where the existing. Hill thicker, hill thicker walls are and. Also, I added. The vegetation line onto the site plan just to show that there are. There's a significant amount of trees and vegetation below the the home. You know, and down the bluffs, which helps stabilize everything and shows that. There is a lot of greenery on the site. So yeah, we're excited to hear your feedback on the project and. We've also, you know, just to reiterate, we've worked really hard at coming up with a. Design and architecture that we feel is gonna fit the site really well and blend in with the hillside and. How the roof lines are and how it steps down the existing contours of the the site and. Using. Natural materials and earth tones to the. Exterior that just help it blend in and be rooted in. That Trinidad coastal environment and landscape. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, I'm here for any questions or anything.
Terrific, that'd be great, because I, I'm sure we're going to have some. Mr. Hasselquist, do you want to add anything, or do you just respond to questions, or how would you like to proceed?
Can you hear me? I don't, one thing maybe we haven't talked about that much, and we, we say, well, the house is in disrepair. And whatnot. You know, I kind of looked at this like, well, is, would it be easier to do a remodel project? And the, the truth is. You know, it's was, it's, the first part of it was built in nineteen fifty-four and. It's upholstered in piers and it's, it's truly melting into the ground and it's full of fungus and dry rot and termites. So it's not something you can remodel. I suppose you could do it a quarter of at a time until you get a new house. But really what it needs is a new found, new foundation and. It needs to be rebuilt, and that's why I'm here and. Going through this process with you guys, and I appreciate you, all your time. Questions, I'll, I'll refer to them and, and also Giovanni's here, the geologist, if you have any questions.
Oh, great, okay. All right, terrific. Thank you very much, and thanks for your patience as we work through our process here. I'm gonna, at this point, I will open to the commissioners' questions, and then we'll go to public comments. So. Commissioners, does anyone want to start with questions? Commissioner Hopkins.
Did I hear that you were going to do something with the foundation to allow it to settle? Or do a special foundation?
The foundation, we consulted a structural engineer. And he's going to design essentially a slab. And if there's any movement, and then we build the house on top of the slab. Maybe Giovanni or Julian can come in on this too, but it's a, it's a mattress and it's, it's just a. It's like a, a big stem wall, the whole thing. And it's, it's also, there's really large boulders underneath the existing house now. And it will be tied into those boulders. And it'll be one big, big mattress essentially. And so. It shouldn't move, but in the cases it does move, we can adjust the house accordingly. Because it will, it will be, it'll be one big mattress.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, that it's essentially a waffle slab that. Will cover the entire underside of the house, and what that does is it spreads the load of the house. Out evenly over the ground. As opposed to a perimeter foundation where most of the load is just at the edge or point loads throughout, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, were you, any other questions? Otherwise, Commissioner Stockness, I believe you had your hand raised.
So the slab, the mattress slab will be poured on top of the. Existing foundation?
No, Diane, we will actually be removing the existing concrete foundation so we can get a nice clean. Connection to the existing. Rocks and bedrock.
Okay, so you're going to use the, the footprint, though, you're not. Moving the slab out or forward or any of that, so it's just the existing, okay.
For the most part, there's a little bit, there's some areas that are a little bit beyond the existing, but those will be. Most of that will be cantilevered. Where your joints go out over the. The wall of the foundation.
Okay, so it's moving about four feet to the east, is that correct, Julian?
Let's see here.
Footprint of the house, as I recall, I tried.
It's actually more to the northwest. There's a area, I wish I had a photo, let's see. There's a notch in the existing house that we're sort of filling in. It's more at the back. Where we're creating the new entry and entry deck.
Okay, so the, the height, is it going to be twenty-five feet or twenty-eight?
Let's see here.
That was, I had a bad question.
It was twenty-five.
So on page. Let's see, on page eleven, yeah, it says twenty-four, five, and then on page A two, on the, it says twenty-eight. Right, of the, of the site plans.
Oh, I know what happened there. You're right, yeah, it says Trevor, before the last planning commission. Meeting, Trevor asked for some additional analysis as to. How. The existing roof height, you know, correlated with the existing structure as well as. Existing ground line, and I was able to learn from her that how you calculated that it's from the. Approximate average ground line. When I put the twenty-eight feet, that was from the, the ultimate lower. Point, you know. So. It's actually twenty-four foot five. And it's, it, that site slopes in different directions, so it's a little bit hard to see that in my drawing, but. On the sheet A.
Because twenty-five feet is, you know, for the city, that's what. We were in, I don't want to go over that, even when we were talking about. Other. Requests, you know, for permits. So my, my issue is that. Everything's changing, the land, you know, and Trevor gave this big report and the. Geologist gave the report, you know, what was his name, starts with a V. But it is a special environment and there is unstable soil. Erosion and wave action has caused a lot of destruction in Trinidad. You know, since the eighties. I've been here since seventy-five, okay. And so I'm kind of worried about the storm and the wind conditions and the erosion, you know, I mean, we saw what happened to the lighthouse. And. You know, we've seen different parts of the area change, so. Because it is a special environment, I am concerned about that. And I just, I, I read all of the coastal commission's reports and she's, you know. The lady that did that report is, you know, kind of the opposite of what Trevor has presented to us, so it's can, it's hard. My, my personal concern is it might be a little too big. Are there more than two people that are going to live there, Paul?
No, it's just my wife and I. Have to stay there. They're all leaving the coop right now, and so our, I, idea is to. We're gonna move.
Yeah, I mean, there's room for them when they come back. I'm just, I just didn't know if it was too big, but. Julian is a really good architect, and he worked with my husband, so I know. Some of his projects and his, his design, he's really good. I just didn't know. If it was too big for that site because there is an S T R there and there is a detached. What is it, an A D U on the property? Is that what it is, Trevor?
It is an A D U that is licensed as an S T R.
Oh, okay, okay, so that A D U S T R is on your property, Paul? Oh, okay, well, I feel better about that already because I was worried about the traffic. So what about the traffic? How much traffic? about the traffic. So what about the traffic? How much traffic is in and out?
There's, there's a, there's a, not much. I mean, there's, there's one person that lives down the driveway past us.
Okay.
And so it's just his property and ours. So there's not much traffic.
Well, what about the STR? Is it busy?
They, no, it's, it's, it's really tiny. It's, it's a really tiny house.
Okay, because most of them have been sold.
I think it's eighteen by twenty-four.
Okay, no, what I'm worried about is the number of people going down scenic and the driveway. Has it been busy all summer?
No, it hasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, it hasn't been. You know, one thing I wanted to say was, I don't know if you've all gotten a chance to look at those aerial photographs I took with it.
They're great.
And, and this is, I think, is in one case where pictures do really speak a thousand words because you can see all the the rocks down on that beach.
And the vegetation.
Yeah, and the action it has. And I encourage you to look at that if you all haven't.
Yeah, I just didn't know if the whole thing was gonna be too big. The place right now, is it big?
No, it isn't. But the, where we're getting that extra square footage is like right now underneath the house.
Porch and the balcony.
Yeah, it's just, it's just kind of a really, a big crawl space underneath the house right now. So since the house is going to be up a few more feet and also we want to take advantage of that space that's under the house that's not being used right now.
Yeah.
You know, having a laundry room there and a bathroom back there is, is gonna be really helpful.
Okay.
So it's not, we're not, you know, increasing the footprint, we're, we're taking advantage of the space that's underneath the house that's not being taken advantage of.
Okay, and so your plan is to demolish the whole house and then start anew?
Yeah, it, it needs to be. It's, you know, it's on post-in-peer right now and it's been remodeled, you know, it's probably added on three times. It's a, it's like split level three, right now, it's, it's really kind of a it's not a very easy design to, it's not, it doesn't, it's not functional, aside from the fact that it has, every piece has to be torn out and replaced.
Yeah, so it's better to demolish that. So.
It needs a proper foundation for starters, so.
And you haven't seen any springs on the property? Springs of water?
No, no. I mean, we're, yeah, there, there's no springs of water on the property.
Okay.
And I wanted to point out that, well, to all of you, that the design of the existing house, there's a spot where the roof slopes into the center wall. It's really a funky design. And that wa, that point has been leaking for how long would you say, Paul? Decades.
Probably since.
Fifty years.
It was built, and that whole wall has dry rot in it because water has been getting down in there, you know? And all the way, when Paul and I went under the house, it's, you can see where it's getting into the foundation and down underneath. So that's, I mean, it's, there's so many issues with that house in terms of how the roof is done and waterproofing and flashing that there's a lot of rot in it, you know? Because of that, so.
So Paul, you'll just live in the ADU or the STR when you, if, when you do the rebuilding?
I probab, you know, may, maybe, maybe not. So right now, you know, we've had, we've had a vacation rental for a little while. And then before it was just one person living in there because of COVID.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm not planning on, on living there while I'm building it because I live in West Haven. And I really, I, you know, we, we need.
Are you, are you the builder then?
I am the builder. Actor, yeah.
Okay. All right. I think that's enough, Cheryl. Thank you very much, Julian and Paul.
Thanks, Diane.
You're muted, Cheryl.
Commissioner Hakkinen, do you have any questions?
I do have, I do have one. Is, are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. I worry about my internet connection here. It's a minor thing. Trevor, on your staff report, page fifteen, you talk about in response to the coastal commission, you put in there, but it's assumed that an alternative treatment system could be engineered and constructed in another location on the property. And my question, this might be for the geologist on the call. I believe in, I think it was the final rebuttal, if you will, to the coastal commission talks about that the septic system is located in the only feasible spot on the site for that. So does that mean for this project, there's no reserve field possible? Or is anybody can speak to that? Just curious.
There is actually a reserve area. I believe it's shown on the site plan, although because it was done as to repair, a reserve area wasn't required. But there is room for reserve area that's shown on the plan. I guess my assumption is that you know, you can engineer your way out of a lot of stuff. And so if, if the septic system ever became threatened by bluff retreat or a land instability or something like that, that, you know, there is the potential that something, some sort of alternative design could be engineered for, for somewhere on the lot. But you know, this one is installed, it's, you know, much less. You know, it's, it's cheaper to install a standard system and, you know, the functioning, you know, it's, it's in a location that, you know, based on the geologic report is, is fine. And so I don't think that's needed now. I was just saying that, you know, if there is bluff retreat and they have to reassess it in the future, there is, there is potential, maybe they could engineer something somewhere else. But maybe Giovanni can speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Currently, the, you know, the reserve area would be immediately down slope of the, the existing two leach lines. So there's a, there's a similar sized area outline for a reserve area. If if, if bluff retreat ever did occur, there is additional area up slope of the existing leach lines, which are, you know, currently there's sidewalks there, there's vegetation. It'd be the area between the existing leach lines and the road that goes to, to Doran, the, the, the residence at the far end of the site. That there's soil, there's good soil up there, there's native soil, that could be utilized for a reserve area if needed. As it is, the area where the leach field is now and the, and the, the reserve that show, there's, there's decent soil there, seems to provide ample treatment for the effluent as an extra step and factor safety. County Health came up with the idea of adding a, a pre-treatment unit and it would be an off-the-shelf, a rainco system pre-treatment unit. It's about the size of a septic tank. It would be plugged in between the existing septic tank and the leach lines. So it's a pop system, yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to square Trevor's comment with yours on item eight on page seventeen, July twenty-fifth, that just was stating there's no alternative areas to set a new septic system. But where it is existing, there's room for modifications or whatnot if something were to happen to the existing lines. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of brief comments and then I want to open to public comments because I think we covered some of the things that I had last time. But, I mean, first of all, I think the design is in harmony with the environment. It looks really good. The materials that you are proposing very similar to some of the things we, we did and, and it, I hope blends in very well and I think your house will as well. So beautiful design. I, I, the things that give me pause a little bit are the setback of twenty feet. I feel that if the footprint of the house weren't enlarging, then the setback should remain thirty feet. And that has been, we're probably not as particular about that sometimes, except in special environment. And that's what this is. So I feel like some of the rules that we have in place are specifically for special environment and those make it a little harder to, to kind of overlook. But I, I'm just posing some of my, my concerns because I think I've said last time and this time that I think it's, they need for a new house. Given what, the way you've described, the existing residence is, is, you know, it's obvious. It's obviously not working the way it is and not livable. So I was a little concerned about septic between the ADU, short-term rental plus another house on this property. I believe we're looking at four bathrooms. We don't size septic that way though. As I recall, Trevor can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we size it by bedrooms. Although this house is listed as a one-bedroom, it does have another, an office, which I understand is not a bedroom. So we're actually looking at maintaining the two bedrooms on the property. So the septic, I assume, has been sized for that. But I share Commissioner Stockness is concerned about size. I actually thought you might come back with a little bit smaller, closer to the two thousand square foot guidelines that the city has, especially in the special environment. Having said that, it's only three hundred and fifty square feet more than that. But again, we're dealing with the, with the setbacks. Let's see. The, the comparison to twenty scenic drive. So I just, I wanted to comment because I do think there are a lot of similarities in the proximity of the properties to the ocean, the gabions, although the gabions at twenty scenic are not, are in disrepair. However, I think one fifty scenic that has much more slope to the property. So twenty scenic is an acre of flat and, and so was able to accommodate the setbacks and also accommodate the size restrictions. So I see one fifty, so I wanted to mention that I did drive down and there's, and the, the other difference is you're talking about two houses. So there's a house already there, the small ADU. I believe it's eleven hundred and sixty square feet. And then now a proposition for a twenty-five hundred square foot home as well. So that is also different. So I, looking at the property, it seemed to me that there was less buildable land there and that this the architecture of this house, while it fits very, very well, could be architected, I think, to be a bit more to fit the footprint a little bit better and, and, and allow for those setbacks. And I guess the last thing would be septic. I, I am a little concerned about it. It sounds like we've decided the pre-treatment will, will take care of it. And I'm not a septic expert, so I have to rely on the experts. So I guess I'm at peace with that. If we think that'll work, that's, that's very important, especially so close to the, to the ocean. So I do want to say emotionally, I am really on board. I'd love to see you guys have a new house. I just have those concerns that I mentioned. All right. And with that, I want to open to public comments.
Hi, this is Dorn Morgan. I'm his only neighbor impacted by the construction.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely, I'm excited for him and his family to get this, to get this project done because it's, right now, honestly, it's an eyesore. It's, it's in disrepair. It's inviting some of the transients and homeless folks of, of which we've had three or four just this year. And we would certainly support him to get this project done. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Jackie, I believe you have your hand raised.
Good evening. Planning Commission and thank you, Cheryl. As you know, Trinidad Grand Trier is in very close proximity to this project. And we support Mr. Hasselquist's option to rebuild his house, definitely. But we are experts in this matter because there are approximately ten homes on coastal bluffs. And they are all moving. Recently, we were fortunate enough to be able to receive a grant to do some analysis. We have a slope stabilization project through FEMA, FEMA mitigation. And we're, we have an expert geo-tech company involved and an engineering company. So I just wanted to say caution is absolutely the best method here in making sure that there are no spills, there is no seepage into the ocean. And my other concern is because this is within Trinidad Grand Trier's area of concern, I would request a cultural monitor for soil disturbance. So as they excavate, it would be really great to have a cultural monitor present. And with that, we wish him well and we're happy to share information, actually. If, if your architect or your geo-tech person would like to talk to us, we're happy to share information. Because it is a huge problem and all of the homes on the rancheria on the ocean cliffs are moving. So I thought I'd share that information.
Thank you very much. And I second the idea for the cultural monitor. We can add that to the conditions. Other public comment? All right. In that case, I, I see none at this time. I'd like to bring it back to the planning commission. Is there a motion or any additional questions?
Commissioner. Yeah, I just had a question regarding the setback. As I read the staff report, the existing setback is sixteen, this new one will be twenty. So we are technically improving the existing setback while not within thirty. We're still making a stepwise improvement. Is that the case?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
There's not, you know, we're sandwiched against a giant rock. So we're, there's not that much room for to go, I mean, it is where it's at. It's, it's, that's what we have to work with. And, you know, regarding also the movement on the rancheria, you know, that's, I, what I've come to understand is that's, that's a little more, it's a little different than where I'm at because of the big the rock point right there. Whereas I think there's more of an earth flow around it. And we're right in the center of it. I don't know if Giovanni might speak to that, but I think that's all I have to say at the moment.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, Commissioner Hakkinen. Giovanni, were you going to say something?
Oh, yeah, if you'd like. Yeah, no, Paul makes a good point. You know, directly up slope of the residence is that really large outcrop. There's a house built on top of it. And, you know, I acknowledge the, the area between McConaughey Creek to the, at the north end, all the way to the south end on the rancheria property. I mean, it is one large coalescing, slow-moving earth flow. I've seen the movement on the rancheria property, but my son's, you know, friends with Jeremiah Brown. So I've been down there plenty. The, the roads buckling. You know, it's like much of Trinidad Bay, there's slow creeping earth, earth flow movement. I think the house at one fifty scenic, it reflects that to some degree where it looks out of level a few inches. Now granted, you know, it's a few inches over sixty years or more, sixty-five years. So that, you know, that'd be the whole idea behind doing a structurally reinforced and integrated math foundation is that basically the house is gonna float on this, this raft of concrete and steel. Could it go out of level, you know, a couple, a few inches over seventy-five years? Perhaps. But, you know, it could be re-leveled. As far as any catastrophic slope failures, I, I just, I just don't see that mechanism occurring in this area. And again, you know, there's a large rock buttress direct slip slope. There's a large rock outcrops downslope that are buttressing that slope. So there is some, some natural protection afforded by those large intact bedrock blocks. So, you know, you buy a piece of land on the coast, there's always some risk involved. But it, I think the risk is mitigatable and it doesn't pose a risk to the health and human safety. So it's, in my opinion, well within the, the, you know, the typical risk accepted. Um, so it's, in my opinion, well within the 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 um, you know, the the typical risk accepted by building people living on the coast. Um, this isn't a big lagoon. This isn't Pacifica or Daly City where 40 feet of bluff is lost overnight. There's has been some uh bluff retreat that occurred in 82, 83 that was fixed with the welded wire wall. The welded wire wall still in place. There hasn't been any bluff retreats since that time. So it's doing its job. And like I said, in my opinion, the minimal risk that does exist is is well within the acceptable limits. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the planning commissioners and uh close public comments for now. Um, Commissioner Stockness?
So I want to ask um Julian a question and then um maybe Paul and him can answer it. Um, what about the the deck? The deck um design, is it is it uh galvanized steel posts and wood? I don't know where where he is. Can you hear me, Paul?
I can hear you. Is it galvanized post? You know, I suggested galvanized railing because stainless steel railing was so wires were so expensive. And um, but now I'm going back to, I think the little tiny stainless steel's wires are nicer looking. You can't really see them.
No, so the the deck is in wood.
The posts that come off the the deck, I think they'll be redwood.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the deck, Diane, I didn't realize that. I was on mute. The uh duck is redwood and the post supporting it will be redwood. The foundation for those posts, I don't know what the design of that will be yet, but probably. You know, round concrete piers that go down, that go into a mat sort of a. Pure uh foundation or footing.
Okay, because you know, right now we're having an extreme wind event in Trinidad Trinidad. We've lost two panels. So that means that we've lost um 23 panels now since last November. So we're putting in the galvanized posts and our fence, I don't, I don't know what it is. It's either cedar or redwood. But you know, I'm not on the coast. I'm two blocks in. But I'm southerly exposed and this project is what, west, south and west?
Southwest.
Yeah. Okay, so I was just curious about those um, you know, the balcony and the deck. And is there a deck on top of the house?
No.
Okay, okay, I guess.
No, but there's a deck off the second floor and then one.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the design, Julian, is beautiful. But I'm worried worried about the wind because my neighbor is about ready to break a window with his tree into my where I am. Like right, right out there. So it'll be stable. It'll be stable with the wind with those just redwood or you don't think you need to galvanized posts?
That's a good point if we should do actual metal posts. But I do want to add that this site is more protected from the wind, at least your typical northwest winds.
Yeah.
Because of Trinidad head, it's been really interesting.
Yeah.
Where I've been up above and it's windy as heck and then you go down the driveway to this site. And it's hardly windy at all. It's really an interesting phenomenon. However, when a storm hits, it will be hitting from the southwest. Diane, are you having wind from the southwest now?
Yeah.
Like with all the wind we've been having?
Forty forty mile an hour gusts.
Uh huh.
It's swirling around a lot, but I am gonna.
Right.
I'm gonna move it.
Well, I do.
I know. Sorry.
What the construction of that, that was because it is on the the coast. Okay, thank you.
I just want to move us, uh, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to move us a little bit because we um, we are gonna be talking about some rancheria uh permits as well. And I know folks are on the call waiting for that as well. So I just um, I I will ask again, I guess, commissioners, is there a motion? How how are you guys, how do you want to proceed to approve? Um, do you need more information? Or another alternative?
I think I'm ready to proceed.
Okay.
Um, it adding a condition of approval for a cultural monitor, I'll go ahead and make a motion that based on the application materials. Information and findings included in this staff report and based on public testimony, I find that the product is consistent with application regulations. And I move to adopt the information required designer view, view protection and use permit findings in the staff report. And approve the project as submitted in the application as described in the staff report and as conditioned herein.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
And real quick, um, Aaron mentioned the added conditions.
Sorry, one sec.
Fif- fifteen. Uh, yeah, Aaron mentioned he was adding the condition 15 for the culture to require a cultural monitor to be on site during ground disturbing activities. But I just also wanted to remind him um that the motion should include also the modification to condition 12 that I mentioned. That it would be in the event the edge of the bluff recedes within 10 feet of the foundation or five feet from other improvements.
Thank you. Yes, Trevor.
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
The motion. All right. And all those in favor?
Hi.
Commissioner Stockness, Commissioner Hakenen, Commissioner Hopkins, and I am afraid I'm going to oppose. Um, it will be approved anyway, but I am going to oppose because for the reasons I mentioned and my concerns about the coastal commission. Um, but thank you very much and I wish you um congratulations. I wish you the best of luck in building your new home. Thank you.
You very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Did I say something real quick?
Yes, Commissioner Hopkins.
I I just wanted.
I didn't know you were raising your hand. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. I just wanted to say thank you for the really nice complete set of plans. And the thoughtfulness for the lighting I see is in here and just say it's just a real nicely thought out. I appreciate that the neighbors are on the on the call that they're approving. Um, it's really working with the neighbors. Nice job, guys. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, we are moving on to the next item in our agenda. And it is the rancheria's grading permit and design review to construct an approximately 1,300 square foot, single-story interpretive visitor center. Located on previously disturbed lands currently occupied occupied by storage units and the gift tackle shop. The building will house the gift and tackle shop, a seating and viewing area, a coffee bar, reception area, two offices and a restroom. It would also provide educational opportunities focused on regional resources for tribal citizens and the public. This will be located at One Bay Street within uh Trinidad Harbor area. And I will uh start with by asking for the staff report. I'll uh allow, of course, the rancheria to add the applicant to add their comments for a few moments. And then we'll basically follow the same process we just did. So Trevor, do you want to lead it, kick us off with the staff report?
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, so um, this uh, the interpretive center is proposed. In the location where the existing bait shop is, there's also a sort of a shed type structure that's used as office and storage. And there's also like a railroad car um, storage container um type of structure that's also used for for storage. Um, there's some utility boxes. Um, the areas used for storing the the skiffs um in the winter and that sort of thing. So it's kind of a. A hodgepodge of of improvements there right now. Um, and so this would consolidate all those structures. Um, it would be located, you know, from the. The sizes from the exterior wall of the existing tackle shop to the exterior wall of the existing office shed building. So it it doesn't take up more of an area than than is already um taken up by existing structures there. Um, oh, and there's also a porta potty over there as well that um I've that has been known to um. Um, wander off in the winter during storm waves. Um, so it would be good to to um actually have that office building with a rest restroom. So the idea is um, it would still house the tackle shop and bait shop um with an expanded um gift shop. Also have some interpretive uh materials. It would have a small coffee shop and a seating area that would also provide viewing of the harbor. Um, and it would have a couple of office spaces and a restroom inside as well. So it's about 1,300 square feet. Um, referrals were sent um out for this project. I actually, I um expanded the city's referral process. And I'm gonna do that into the future. It's still a work in progress, but I um, for this project, in addition to city staff and and the coastal commission. Um, I also sent referrals to to the UROC tribe and the Chirai Ancestral Society. Let's see, the the city engineer um did have a few comments, um, but doesn't have any real concerns with the project. Um, these, his comments will be included as condition, have been included as conditions of approval. Um, basically dealing with with stormwater and drainage for the most part. Um, also, the um health department, um, they had no issues with the existing um septic tank or septic system. It's actually a a what's known as a package treatment plant. Um, so it it treats the wastewater, fairly high volume of wastewater before discharging it into the existing leach field. Um, it is um. It's well under their water use currently is well under what that system is designed for. It's about half. Um, I think this, I have it in the staff, that's probably later in the staff report. Um, so maybe I'll wait to get to that. Um, the harbor area is a little um, the at the and the coastal commission expressed some concerns, but didn't really have a chance to evaluate the project. They're obviously concerned about view shed issues there. Um, they mentioned some unobstructed views of Trinidad Bay, but I I don't think those actually exist currently. Um, and that um, you know, minimizing again geologic and flood hazards, um, storm surges, sea level rise, tsunamis. And then ensuring that the structure won't interfere with commercial fishing and recreational boating activities. Um, and I believe those have been addressed in the staff report. Um, but as you're probably aware. The harbor area, um, it's owned by the city as commercial, but the coastal commission did not certify that that zoning as part of the city's LCP. And so that area is um considered a um, an area, uh, area of deferred certification. So the city is not authorized to issue the coastal development permit in that area. So the the, once the rancheria has city approval, um, they're going to have to go to the coastal commission for the coastal development permit. So um, these issues will also be addressed before um the coastal commission. Um, I will also mention that there is a corner of the building that um. Is going to encroach within the city's Galindo Street right of way. The existing office shed already does that. Um, and so there is a condition of approval that they need, they will need to receive um needsmen or some sort of landowner agreement. Um, and approval from from the city council on a form approved by the the city attorney um to locate the building. Um, within that portion of of the city's right of way, which um the city isn't currently using. Um, there's a description of of the project there that was provided by the rancheria. Um. So the zoning is commercial and principally permitted uses include retail stores and services of a like commercial nature. Uh, restaurant service stations, theaters um are also allowable uses. Um, the proposed interpretive visitor center seems to be compatible with these allowable uses. Um, minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet, um, but dense, there aren't any density requirements that would apply to this project. Um, setbacks are um awkward to apply in the harbor area because it's. I don't know, five or six different um parcels, yet it's managed all as one. Um, so setbacks don't really make sense. Um, the only area where setbacks would be an issue on this property anyway is at the Galindo Street right of way. Um. Site is already flat, so minimal grading will be um required for this project. Um, but the city engineer has found that the the findings for the grading ordinance um can be met. Uh, views, so um, the both the coastal act and the city's ordinances protect um public views. The rancheria provided some photos, um, but it looked like those were from the winter and I wasn't sure exactly the date. So I went down and and took some current photos. Um, and as you can see, there's, you know, the that first photo there on page seven, that's as if you were driving down down the accessway. Um, and then the second photo is basically standing in front of the building. So you can see. There are currently not unobstructed views of of Trinidad Bay now. And since the building will basically be located in the footprint of the existing building, all you're losing is that view in between those two structures. And then it'll be a little taller too, so you'll probably lose the ridge line above that shed as well. Um. But it seems, it seems pretty minimal and, you know, there's aesthetic advantages of of consolidating those buildings. Um, the proposed building is is going to um be similar in in design and materials and colors as the restroom. So with the rock facing on the base and um the the siding on the top and in earth tone. So it seems like it will overall improve the aesthetics of that area. Um, it's not going to interfere with public access at all. Um, it's not gonna interfere with the boat launch or other harbor operations. Um, like I said, it's it's basically located in in the existing footprint of of those buildings. Um, parking and traffic, so parking is another difficult thing to evaluate. So this is adding square footage, so um parking requirements for the buildings and uses in the harbor area would increase. Um. But the city doesn't. We don't have parking standards for outdoor recreational uses. So there's really no way to measure if the existing parking is is conforming really or or not. Um, and because some of the, you know, over in the gravel area, the spaces aren't aligned, it's difficult to determine how many spaces are over there. So um, but I am doing a parking study right now and um I did on one day count 192 vehicles in in the harbor parking area. And so the this additional square footage would would require um. You know, like five spaces. So, you know, that the 192 well exceeds what's required for, you know, the restaurants and other uses that we have parking the the STR. So well exceeds the standard um of parking that the city has. So I um, and no parking is being removed as part of the project, um, but none none is being added, but I don't, I don't think it's necessary for this. Um, construction date and timing is is currently unknown. It's gonna depend on the permitting process and the bid process. Um, but there is, because it's on the edge of the harbor area, um, it's expected that disruptions to traffic and and parking would be minimal. Um, the project has been conditioned on maintaining access to to the beach and the and the boat launch um at all times during construction. Um. Coastal dependent uses, again, um, this this project is in coastal dependent, but it doesn't seem to interfere with the existing. You know, coastal dependent uses in the harbor area and and seems to um enhance those uses and provide additional services for for visitors. And so seems to be um consistent with the coastal act requirements for that. Um, utilities are already provided to the site. Um, stormwater will be connected to the existing stormwater treatment system um that's over by the pier that covers the pier. Um, water, electricity are already provided to the site. Um, the septic system. The the kitchen will be plumbed to the grease trap um that already exists for the seascape and then into the existing septic system. And then the restroom will be plumbed directly into the septic system. Um, and the the health department did mention that um, they don't have any issues with the septic. But that um, the food team um will need to review the project prior to construction. um will need to review the project prior to construction. And the coffee bar will likely um require a a permit um from from the food team at um Division of Environmental Health. So um that will be added. Uh I would propose adding that um as condition number nine for this project. And the pro- this project's not in an area that's designated as unstable. It's relatively flat. Um no known stability issues. Um it is in an area that's mapped as having soil limitations. Um an R two soils report was prepared for this project um to inform the foundation design. Um includes recommendations for site preparation. Um mostly those clay soils are limitations for the septic system. The leach field is actually located sort of on the hillside uh below the um vacation rental that's up on the hill. So it's outside of that clay areas. Um floods, tsunami, sea level rise, so um the elevation is approximately twenty-five feet. So again, well outside of any um you know hazard for for sea level rise encroaching. It is within the tsunami zone, as is everything in the harbor. Um we don't have special requirements for um tsunami zones. Uh the R two report did recommend that the design allow for blowout of the walls um in case of tsunami, if that's feasible, so that would preserve the structure. Um and so that has been included as a condition of approval as feasible. Um it is in an area or it's near an area at the twenty-one foot contour, um a FEMA mapped VE flood zone, so that's storm, storm surge, storm waves. Um but it's still located four feet above that flood zone, so even if sea level rise um were to occur, the the upper end of the most likely range is about three point three to 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 four point three in Humboldt Bay, um which is subsiding, so that's more than what would be expected in Trinidad. So um it's not in an area that's subject to um flooding, sea level rise, or geologic hazard. Tsunami is the only issue. Um septic system, as we already talked about, um cultural resources, the the rancheria has um done archaeological investigations for their site. Um and this is not an area where uh resources would be expected, but a cultural monitor will be required to be on site during ground disturbing activities. Uh the then design reviews, so the design review findings have been written in a manner to allow approval. Again, I think the biggest issue here is um views. And you know, I think that the view impact is minimal, but the aesthetic impact is is an improvement. So staff recommendation is for approval of the project. Um as usual, you could alter the conditions of approval um to address any concerns or continue the hearing to get additional information. Conditions of approval are fairly standard, like I said, um adding the condition that um they will have to get approval from the city council um for for construction within the Galindo Street right of way. So let me make sure that one made it in there.
This is condition approval three.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I skipped over that one. Yeah, okay. Condition three, um oh and there's actually nine conditions, so the health department condition would um number eight is actually doesn't, isn't labeled, so eight would be nine. And ten would be the um getting the permit from the kitchen, kitchen crew at the health department. Um I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Trevor. Um did anyone from the rancheria, from the applicant uh wish to speak for a few moments? Or uh would you prefer to just take questions? Jackie, did you want to uh?
Hi again.
Thoughts?
I just, I just wanna say we're really excited about this project. Um it's one of the last remaining projects beside our stormwater project to um mitigate all of the uh existing buildings. Um we inherited all of the buildings that are there now, and if folks remember correctly, the existing bait shop was moved from the foot of the pier uh because of the stormwater vault that had to be relocated. And it was always understood from the pier project that we would be rebuilding. So and Trevor's nodding her head, so I, it was never intended that that bait shop be a permanent fixture. We knew that it needed to be rebuilt. And uh as everything, it takes time to complete design and engineering and to acquire the permitting and especially to acquire the funding, to go after the grant funding necessary to complete a project of this scope. So as I mentioned, we're very excited. We feel like it's a really good package. We've kept everything consistent with the other aesthetics from the um the restrooms. Um and Trevor just did an excellent job of the staff report. So thank you very much. And as she mentioned, we will be adhering to California Building Code. We have plenty of capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. We have an existing stormwater vault. Um and we, you know, definitely agree with the conditions. I was a little confused, Trevor. I believe Leslie indicated she did turn in the structural calcs and the soils report. And I think that would, those items were part of the conditions, or I saw that listed somewhere. Um so I wanted a little clarification on that.
Yeah, I think um the engineer had um wanted to know some stormwater volumes and then the water pressure volumes. And there were, he had a couple of comments that I thought might have been uncovered already in the plans. But that just means that as part of the building permit process, he'll look at that more closely. Um so as as part of that process, you know, there may be a little bit of adi- additional information that you need to to put forward. But um you know, whatever is required for for that, but um.
That's no problem. So thank you very much, and I too am available. And our uh engineer, James Ammon, is on the line. He's uh his company is Willowhawk. So if you have any technical questions, he's available.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, commissioners, uh you're up for questions. Commissioner Stockness. Your hand was raised first, and then.
Okay, so.
Hopkins.
Trevor, can you explain the Galindo right of way? Is that the trail? Is that the hill with the steps?
Yeah, so it's not the the trail. If you look at the um site plan, the first page there, it shows the property lines, and you could see um that Galindo right of way comes way down. It it co- and and we had to do this for the their stormwater project as well, because they're gonna be putting new, you know, permeable pavers and and some other work in there. So you know, there there are already harbor improvements in that right of way, and the rancheria is already managing it. But there's not an official um easement that we know of. And so, you know, for a permanent structure, um it's just the corner you can see there. It's not gonna, it's not on any existing pathways or roadways, um and it's not gonna interfere with any access. It's not a part of the right of way that the city's currently using, um so I don't anticipate that 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 would be an issue.
Okay, so next, I um I agree um that well, I actually disagree. I think the views are going to be impacted, because I've been here forty-five years and we have a boat. We use the launcher going down into the the bay. Um so I used the old building, you know, where the bait shop was before the handicap parking. And then now, I just think, you know, it's just my personal opinion that the view between the sheds and the rooftop will be affected. And I like the design. I'm all in favor of this whole operate, I mean, this whole uh facility. Um I think, you know, it'll be good. I'm a little concerned about what's gonna happen in the kitchen, because the seascape is, you know, a restaurant. And my other concern is parking. Okay, so I had a conversation with a rancheria member today, and I said thirty-minute parking out in front of the uh interpretive center, because people park there and they're there all day. And I've seen the same truck with the the um surfboard in there at different times. And I've done parking down there, and I got two hundred and six spaces on July one, on a Friday at uh I think it was one, one o'clock. So that's just, and I don't know if we can add it as a condition, but I am concerned about the parking in front. I want everybody to be able to use this center, to go in for a cup of coffee, to go in for, you know, some bait. And I don't want them sitting there for two or three hours, and their boat's in the water, and their kids are on the beach or they're on the beach. And this will happen, so that's what I'm thinking. You know, I don't even know if you can get five spaces there. There are four right now. Um but I I'm thinking thirty minutes, get in and get out, unless you have a little permit from the interpretive center that you're in an educational session. Okay, so anyway, that's my issue with the the parking and the views. Um and it looks like the road, they won't move on to the road with the building. Is that right, Trevor? So we'll still be able to go down, check out Launcher Beach, swing around, get the boat unloaded on the the train track is what I call it. Okay, so um that's good. And I liked your your photos um that you did. And you, I think we were both there doing the parking study that day you were doing the photo. Um let's see, and there's twelve seats. Is that right in the restaurant area? Okay, um let me check here. Okay, and then the other thing that I wanted to do with the construction, if you know, everything's approved, is get all right, it's on the back here. Um get some arrows. Have the rancheria get some arrows. Once you get down the hill and you start to go towards the seascape or the or the restrooms, and then you're gonna get to the interpretive center, we need arrows going that way. And then we need arrows to show people how to turn the corner and get out. You know what I'm talking about, Trevor?
Um y- yeah, I think so, and I think um the rancheria will be looking at that more with their stormwater project, since they're gonna be doing.
Okay, because it was an, it was an issue this summer with the trailers, with the tourists. And you know, I had one person coming right at me, and I said, move over, and I made him back up and go the other way. Because they were, I was trying to get out, and they were coming in, and all the cars were parked along that sand area now. And then the trailers and the boats and the parking lot had at least ninety cars. So we definitely need those arrows.
Yeah, but I think boat, boats go one direction and cars go the other, so that's.
Well, this wasn't a boat. This was a car with two people going to the seascape. So uh and then when, when the construction happens, um we need some signs that talk about where to park or where not to park, or the yellow tape that, so they can't get there. So they can't, so they can have that whole space to do their construction, but not the restaurant parking, because we don't wanna take it away from the seascape, because they they need their um restaurant open. So besides the signs during construction and the arrows and the parking, I think I'm done. But I I do like the design. I like the idea that I can go in and get coffee and worms in the same place. Okay, I'm done.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Um hi there. I received a letter from the Ancestral Society, and I was reading it and about Sequa and all that, and I suddenly realized I have to recuse myself from this one. I'm working with the tribe or talking to the tribe about something, so um I'm I'm out on this one, uh but just wanted to point it out that this letter did come in, and I hope you all got it and read it also. And uh, yeah, good luck with it. Thank you.
All right, so then uh Commissioner Hopkins, you would just turn off your video camera and um not participate in the discussion, and then come back uh if you, hopefully you can, come back for the STR discussion. Uh but you're you're welcome to listen in, and it's
That was great, thank you.
Basically, you're leaving the room.
Yes.
Okay, and uh we haven't spoken about uh the reasoning, so I just trust your judgment on that. And uh with that, I will move on then to Commissioner Johnson or Hakenen, if you have questions or comments. Commissioner Johnson?
Uh thank you. Um just, just a couple of things for clarification. Um and in no order specifically. Uh I'm assuming, based on what the report says, the staff report, that the restroom is a public restroom. And I guess the question then would be, and I believe I know the answer, I just wanna clarify this for the record, that it's ADA compliant?
Um I did not check that. I assume it is a public restaurant, the rest restroom. Maybe um Jackie or or Leslie can answer that. It would have to meet building code requirements.
Okay, so so essentially that means it's ADA compliant, I believe. And and so the only, and and I don't think it's a big issue. I was just trying to um clarify whether or not it was going to be available to the public in the uh in in that uh we have the public restrooms right up the, you know, hundred feet or so up the street. Um, okay, um let's see, I I'm a little confused, Trevor, about this uh this this issue. It's on page two uh regarding, under the last paragraph, the site characteristics, uh and it has to do with the right of way. Um this indicates that uh the city has been working with the rancheria since two thousand nineteen. And and there seems to be I I guess what it's a little confusing is, is there a current agreement for uh use of the easement? Or is that still in work? Because it says that the project from two thousand thirteen uh required an easement. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, so I believe that was approved actually at last week's council meeting. The the landowner agreement, the letter, letter of permission for the stormwater project.
Okay, so that includes then a, an agreement for the easement?
I don't think it's an easement. It's a, because it's a right of way. Um I don't believe it was an easement. It was in the form of a letter of permission. Um and it had, you know, had both, it did have both parties' signatures, um you know, a set of conditions um for use of that area.
Uh okay, is it an easement or a right of way?
Well, for the city, it's a right of way. It's the city's right of way.
Okay. Okay.
And and I don't know, I don't know, like I said, for the stormwater project, it was a letter of permission, not an easement that's going to be recorded, I don't think. Um and I don't, you know, this, I wrote the condition so that it's, you know, whatever the city attorney says we need, um then that that will be the form it will need to take.
Yeah, well, the 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 condition states that it, that the rancheria will enter into an agreement with the city or obtain an easement to the fast satisfaction of the city. Or obtain an easement to the satisfaction of the city attorney for the use of the Galindo Street right of way. So I was just trying to clarify exactly where we stand with that right now. And I understand it's a condition of approval and I accept that. That's fine. Okay. Um, uh, just a couple of other things real fast, uh, just a process check. Uh, I, I understand, of course, that since we, uh, since the city doesn't have uh, oversight of the CDB, CDP process. That it will go to the coastal commission for that. Uh, assuming that there are issues related to either the grading. Uh, or the review uh, process, which we do have control over. Uh, will that, will this project come back to the uh, planning commission for? Uh, I'll call it final approval or additional uh, review?
So if the coastal commission approves it as. You know, the same design as the city approved, um, it would not need to come back to the planning commission. Um, but it does. If, if the, if the project gets modified during the coastal commission review, then it might have to come back to you for an amendment for design review. Um, and then it does need a building permit from the city, so that also requires the engineer. Review as well as um, the building officials review.
Okay, thank you. Um. Just real quickly going through my notes here. Um, I did have one question on the site plan. And um, it's actually two questions on the site plan. Uh, the first question on page, on uh, on the plot plan. Uh, you did describe uh, the uh, city of Trinidad easement. Again, I'm back to this easement thing. But uh, there is at the, I'm gonna say at the southern part of the easement, there looks like a small. Um. Box. That points, that has an arrow to it, but then there was also another boundary line that seems to bifurcate it from the rest of the. Uh, easement. What, what, what is that and what's going on there?
Yeah, good question. So um, the, the little um. Yeah, uh. I forget my G, um, geometric terms, is that a rhombus?
It's a polynomial.
So that.
I, one second, sorry, you guys. Are you on page? I saw everybody can follow along. Are you on page one of one on the plot map?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that is not part of the right of way. It is an easement that was granted by the hallmarks to the city to reach the stormwater outfall. And it doesn't actually quite reach all the way to the stormwater outfall. So for the city's stormwater project, the city had to get a letter of permission for the ran- from the rancheria. To do the work to remove the stormwater outfall because that easement doesn't actually quite cover it all. Um, so that is an easement on rancheria property. The other part. The boulder line. Um, that is city right of way. So that's city property.
Okay, I think I understand then the line, the demarcation there. Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, on uh, the sheet C three. The dimin- demolition plan, and, and this is somewhat related to the plot plan as well. But there are several of the buildings here. I guess it's the bait shop and then a storied shed, et cetera. And the demolition plan indicates that those buildings to be relocated. Uh, I guess what wasn't clear to me is, are they being relocated elsewhere on the rancheria property down there? Or are they just going to go away?
That's a good question. I'll let Jackie clarify. Um, I assume because they weren't part of this approval that they were going away. Out of the harbor, out of city jurisdiction. Otherwise, if they were being relocated within city jurisdiction, that would need to be part of this approval.
Good point. Okay. Um, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hakenin, do you have any questions?
I do, just a few. Let me find my notes here as well. Um. I, I'm unclear on the plan. Is the building going to be, have fire sprinklers in it? I couldn't find that definitively listed anywhere.
I believe so. I think all new commercial buildings have to be sprinkled.
I thought I saw it, but I, I can't lay my hands on it at the moment.
I've gone back and forth. I just want to make sure that is gonna happen. Um, there are no proposed changes or improvements to Launcher Beach access currently in this project, right? That's a separate. Issue, correct?
That's correct. So um, there will be some additional pavers put in um, as part of the stormwater project. That's already been approved and separate from, from this project. So this project will not affect um, either the driveway to the launch or the access to Launcher Beach.
Okay, and then. I have one more comment. I just have to find it here in my notes. Do this electronic. Um. It, as we understand it, this, is it gonna be a retail? It sounds like based off Diane's desire to buy coffee and worms, it is gonna be a retail coffee shop, right? Um.
I believe so. That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I'm hoping the applicant can speak to that, the intended use, just to confirm that it's gonna be a retail as opposed to just, you know. Free coffee or something like that. And there, those are, those are my. My few things, I think. I am definitely curious about the, uh, the sprinkler, just confirming because I just couldn't put my fingers on that on the plan anywhere. Alright, thanks. That's it for now.
Erin, if you, if you look at condition of approval six. Uh, the engineer has requested, the last bullet says provide water needs for building, including pressure and volume needs for fire sprinkler system.
Fantastic.
So that implies to me that it's, that they will have a sprinkler system.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I, I knew it was there somewhere, but. Um, okay, I guess it's my turn, I guess. So one, I just want to make sure I understood. That the height of the building is sixteen feet. Is that? Correct? Is that what everybody else saw? Okay. So that is, uh, from a view shed perspective, that's pretty good. It's not a really tall building. And I love the kind of glassed-in enclosure. Um, if that's the piece that's open to the public, that's part of, for perhaps a coffee area, then that also provides views. For folks when the weather's inclement, for people who may be not as hardy, um, you know, maybe wheelchair-bound, you know, that kind of thing. It gives a, you know, some older folks uh, uh, chance to go in and enjoy the scenery and be protected from the elements. It's, it's really a nice, a nice touch. Um, trying to think, is there a way to, I take it that there is not a way to avoid the Galindo right of way? So that is just. Not a possibility, right, Trevor? I mean, is a.
It, yeah, it looks to me because um, then it would have to move closer to the launch facility, and so I think they're trying to keep it within the footprint of the existing buildings.
Okay. All right, that was one of my questions. Um. I'm sorry, I just have one more. So, so we're replacing portable structures and there was, there was some information in here about. Um, because it was a replacement of an existing structure, but I thought, well, they were. Portable structures, but since I can't find my notes, I'm gonna hold on that. Um, watering usage is always a concern right now in the city. The beachcomber, for example, averages about six hundred gallons per day. Uh, adding a restaurant coffee shop will add increased water usage. Um, on the part of the water advisory committee, and because I'm working on a water catchment report as we speak. Uh, if the rancheria were excited about doing some sort of rainwater catchment there, that'd be wonderful. Certainly not a criteria, but. Um, by any means. Um, but I just wanted to mention that. Uh, let's see, I think that's all I had for now, so I'd like to. And I make sure we have plenty of time for public comment. And we did get a letter from Taz. If there's no one from Taz uh, who comments, I will um, read a portion of that letter into the record. So, anyway, let me open for public comments. I am not seeing any at the moment. Oh, there we go. Uh, let me start with, um, I'm gonna start with Jackie so she can answer the questions and then go to Ms. Provo, Sherry. So Jackie, I think you probably heard a few other questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Cheryl, um. I, and I hope I captured most of them. Remind me if I haven't. Um, yes, the restroom is ADA compliant in the harbor. The public restrooms are ADA compliant. Um, the restrooms in the new interpretive center slash bait shop will be for employee use, not for, open to the public. Um, we created and, and built the public restrooms and serviced them twice a day and, you know, we keep those. Those open for the public, so um. Regarding the boundary line, um, we actually have completed a very in-depth survey. We met with Eli and Trevor. Um, our engineer, James Ammon, that survey was done by a licensed professional engineer and it has been recorded. The county of Humboldt and it's, I don't have that uh, survey in front of me or the plan sheet, but it's a real strange little dog leg. That uh, kind of intersects the existing corner of a building. So um, I think everybody is in agreement. It's, it's minimal and it's, it's not impacting the trail itself. The stairs are anywhere near Galindo Trail. It does not impact the trail. I want to make that really clear. It's across the driveway. And it's behind existing sheds right now. Um. The um, demo plan indicates uh, there will be no buildings. That's correct. We will not be leaving any of the existing buildings there. Um, and. What did I miss?
I think that was it. We, there was a question about the fire sprinklers, but I think we answered that. Um.
That, that will, uh, I did want to talk about signage and parking for Diane. Um. I'm happy to look at temporary signage down there because I agree a hundred percent that it can be a mess. Um, and everybody has a different idea of what they can do and what they should do. Um, the overall. Project for the stormwater uh, reconstruction, we were going to include. Uh, really nice signage for everything down there. And in fact, I, I don't know which project will happen first. The stormwater project or the interpretive center. So it's gonna, you know, it's gonna depend on the timing of construction on both projects. But that is our plan. Um, there will be um. Uh, bio swells, there'll be rain gardens, you know, it'll totally change, the stormwater project will totally change the character. Of the existing parking lot and that sand area where we removed the ice plant, that will totally be mitigated. And, and uh, paved and it, you know, everything will change and parking will be maximized. And I did like your idea about uh, limited time on parking in front of the interpretive center. Um, I think that's something we can definitely look at. As far as the um. Uh, the kitchen in the interpretive center, our goal is to sell um, coffee, lattes, cappuccinos. And pastries. It would not be a full kitchen. It, it would just be Danish and coffee, basically. Um, and the interpretive part of it, w- we have um, a coordination going with BLM. We've talked about. You know, uh, having docents also with the museum, Trinidad Museum, uh, cultural docents, our, our tipo, the other tipos in the area. You know, our hope is to really coordinate the cultural resources and the presentation together with marine resources. And actually do educational um, presentations there, so. Um, overall, it's just gonna be a real asset to the entire community. Hopefully I answered everything. I'm happy to come back if I didn't.
Thank you. I think so. Uh, the commissioners will raise hands if not, but I believe that was everything. Thank you. Very comprehensive. All right, uh, I'm back to public comments and I believe, uh, Sherry, I believe you had your hand raised.
Hmm, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, I can now.
I, I'm sorry, my video is spotty, so I'll just leave it off so you can hear me good. Um, y- yeah, so, you know, you know, I am a council member of the York Tribe and I'm sorry that, um, Trevor, we didn't get to be able to meet with you about this project. I know that you did reach out. Um, but, you know, being a very busy government, it is often very difficult to um, meet some of the timelines. Just a few things that I'll, I'll share just from my perspective. In this matter, one, I do want to recognize the, the letter from the Shore Ancestral Society and I, I really hope that you uh, consider some of their points there. Um, I do think it will affect the view shed. Um, I, I think that needs to be considered quite a bit. Uh, second, um, i- if there's any way to uh, avoid the Galindo. Street or the trail easement, I think that that would be really helpful. I don't know if that's possible or not. My understanding with that trail, it is going to be closed. I think the city has been wanting to close that for a while. Um, and I don't think that that's happened yet, and I think they're gonna work on that, bring that back to work on. You know, that is a, a cultural sensitive area. Um, we know that there are some. Um, previous cemetery, cemetery there, et cetera. So I believe that they are looking at closing that trail. But if there's any way to, um, you know, think about the size of the facility, I thought it was. It was a large facility, given the existing facility is three hundred or six hundred and fifty feet. Um, even though there's some other structures there, it's, it's doubling the size. So if there's any way to look at. Reducing the size of that, so it may be able to not affect that right of way. I think that might be something to consider. And um, the last comment I'll, I'll make um. Is that, um, I do think you might be putting the cart before the horse and you should probably have the coastal commission do a full project review on this. Um, to get their input, um, and before, so that you can have a really informed decision. Before you make a decision as the city uh, planning. And then on a personal note, just because I live in Trinidad and go down to the dock a lot and, you know, a family of commercial fishermen and commercial crab people. That place gets very, very busy. And my worry is that um, having a um, sightseeing, another sightseeing visitor center. Will only increase the traffic down there. Um, you know, such that, you know, it might become even more impacted. Um, you know, so, so that we have to think about. You're, you're desiring people to go down there. You want to have educational things down there. Um, and you, you're gonna, you're gonna advertise it. There'll be advertisements to go down there. So you're drawing more people down there to already compacted area. So I think that's what I wanted to say for right now, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, other public comments. I'm not able to scroll down for some reason, but if anybody sees any, any other hand raised, okay, thank you. Um. All right, I will bring it back to uh, the planning commission. I do want to acknowledge the letter from the Shore Ancestral Society. Um. Well, I know the uh, commissioners, uh, most, uh, most have had a chance potentially to look at it, although I believe we got it a little bit before the meeting this afternoon. But um, I think um, Ms. Provo, um. Uh, summarized somewhat the same uh, concerns. Um, I think the concerns center around the size. Um, and maybe I can just go to um. Uh, Taz's kind of recommendations. Um. They feel that the project is being submitted for review prematurely, um, and that the, there are a long list of conditions in the report that should have been dealt with before. and that the, there are a long list of conditions in the report that should have been dealt with before it was brought to the Planning Commission. They have their suggestion that the visitor center, interpretive center be reduced in size to be consistent with the existing building, 600 square foot footprint. And the foundation also consistent to the existing with minimal ground disturbing cement pavers. They'd like to see minimization of the negative impacts to the view shed. Also, the building outside of the Galindo Street Trail right away, which has traditionally been an area of cultural sensitivity and they're concerned about the negative impacts to cultural resources. There was also a comment about Hasselquist's project was much more complete. A bigger project packed it with more detail. And also, deep concern about saying that the Coastal Commission did not have time. And then also water, water concerns. The city is short of water and, and this would be another area of water usage. So I think those were questions and concerns that have been raised and have come up. So I wanted to enter those into the record for TAZ. Okay, back to commissioners. What are your thoughts at the moment about this project? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I I appreciate the comments that the Ancestral Society has brought forward. I was also very concerned about the water usage. And here is a classic example of conflicting, conflicting policies when you look at the concerns that everybody has right now about water. And then, on the other hand, we are in the process of trying to develop an ADU ordinance that would allow for additional water usage in many cases. So I looked at this and, and in my mind said that this is, and I'm just making this a notional case, but that this is adding another AD, one more ADU to the, the water system. So I didn't see that as a significant impact. I was, the, the, the idea of the size, the shape, the, the, the bulk of the, the building is certainly an issue. I think that's balanced by the fact that we are removing several smaller buildings. And I think from an aesthetic standpoint, this will be much more pleasant. Although that's in the eye of the beholder, I understand. The, the other major concern, I think, and we've all voiced it, I think, one way or the other, is views. And, and, and obviously, that's going to be a big concern and a big discussion with the Coastal Commission. And that's why I asked the question earlier about what the process was for bringing the project back. Because I think that will be one of the major concerns that the Plan, sorry, the Coastal Commission will want to, want to discuss. Yeah, there's kind of the chicken versus the egg here in terms of whether or not this project should be moved forward or, or we wait until we get Coastal Commission comments. I, I guess at this stage of the game, I'm inclined to move it forward. Recognizing very clearly that there will be much more discussion at the Coastal Commission level and possibly come back for further discussion with us related to the parts that we would have to engage in. So as I said, I'm, at this point, based on the, all the information, I think there's certainly a lot of issues, but I think that this is a good starting point, that there's no reason that we can't move it forward and, and allow the Coastal Commission to begin their process. Thank you.
Other comments or questions or motions? Okay, I see no questions. Does Commissioner Johnson?
Or are you asking for a motion?
Sure. Yeah. If you want to make one.
You find it. Based on the information submitted in the application included in the staff report and public testimony, I move to adopt the information and findings in this staff report and approve the design review and grading permit for the Trinidad Rancheria Interpretive Center building as submitted and conditioned herein, including the suggested addition of approval of item 10.
All right. And is there a second to the motion, Commissioner Stockness?
So we can't add any parking to that, right? The Rancheria would do that. Is that right, Trevor?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we don't put a condition in for parking because Jackie, the Rancheria representative talked about that, so.
Yeah, and I, I guess the issue that I have is that, you know, well, while this building would increase the parking requirements of the existing, like say, seascape or the existing bait shop by five parking spots, I can't make an assessment of whether there are enough parking spots now because we don't have parking standards for boat launches and beach acts that we, you know, so I can't, I can't assess whether there's currently enough parking and whether they've already got, so. And it, you know, they're not taking up any existing parking and I don't see where they could add parking without, you know, doing more ground disturbance. So I am not proposing a condition for adding more parking.
Okay. And then I just remembered that Ms. Hustler talked about the other, the sand area that, you know, when the Stormwater Project gets going, that there will be more paving and more parking. So that should take care of it. So I'm kind of with Richard. Let's just move it along, see what the Coastal Commission says. And, you know, if they say something about views, because I'm concerned about views, then the design would have to be fixed or changed. So I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And okay, and I saw hands raised, Commissioner Hicken and Commissioner Johnson. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the Rancheria for attending our meeting and providing information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Planning Commission, very much.
All right, we are moving on to our third agenda item, but let me first ask if, would folks like a five-minute break or 10-minute break? Or do you want to carry on? Five-minute break? Okay, let's make it 10 minutes. Let's return at 8:30. It'll be 12 minutes. You get a bonus.
All right, we are. We're back. It's eight thirty and we have one more very exciting agenda item for this evening. The STR ordinance review, continued discussion decision on the review and amendment of the city's STR ordinance. And I won't read the number, but it's from twenty sixteen dash oh three and we will start off with the staff report and then I'll probably ask Commissioner Stockness to say a few words if she would like since she's on the committee and Commissioner Hopkins has rejoined us, so we've got the entire band is here except Commissioner Stockness.
I was just gonna say, I don't see Diane.
Anyway. Um, I, no, let's give her another minute. Let's give her another minute and see, because it's kind of her thing, so. All right, we've got the guest of honor, Commissioner Stockness, so go ahead, Trevor, if you want to do the staff report and then yeah, we'll talk about it.
Sure, so um I, we, at the last meeting, we, we reviewed the ordinance section by section. I have incorporated all the amendments that were discussed previously as well as at the last meeting, which includes the definition of meet and greet that was suggested by the STR committee with the addition of or owner that the city manager suggested, reduction of the cap in the UR zone from nineteen to eighteen, extending the cap in the SR zone from six to seven and implementing a new citywide cap of thirty two. Those changes show up in sections, I'm just gonna say subsections. So they show up in E six as well as look at that, oh, numbering an EF, I guess that would actually be F. So is where it lists the cap. The other things we did, we expanded the restriction of STRs on adjoining properties to all zones and extended the maximum on the number of STR licenses you can have to two total per person. And then there's been a, and then in reviewing the ordinance, I noticed there's a lot of places where it talks about manager or owner or, or the local contact person, the LCP. And I thought it might be beneficial to define property manager. I've got, you know, a potential definition in here. I looked at other ordinances and it, I didn't see that a lot. Most, most ordinances just refer to the manager, but it does seem like the manager can, maybe the owner. So it might, might be nice to include that. There's, there's thirteen locations in the ordinance where that comes up, where it's manager or owner or LCP. Might just make it a little cleaner. Maybe it's not necessary. And then the other issue, obviously, that's been the big issue is, is complaints and enforcement. And one of the things we, we talked about at the last meeting is closing the loop for where a complaint is, is responded to and you know, corrected within a short period of time and whether the city actually hear, hears about those or not. The local contact person is supposed to follow up, up with the city on that. But, but we're not sure that's happening. And then also the, the idea of fines. And so, you know, really ultimately, the, the occupants, the renters should be held responsible for violations. And, you know, certainly they're signing a contract that says they're kind of, they can be fined. I think one of the issues I understand has been that, you know, if you're renting on a platform like VRBO or Airbnb, the deposits are built in and so the manager doesn't necessarily have a way to collect a fine through those platforms. But on the other hand, I've also talked to managers and I mean, if they have to, they can make things work. So, and since that seems to be the biggest issue. Yeah, I tried to address that and so I, I added a couple of things into the enforcement section, which is towards the back at subsection L. So I added under fines that occupants will be the, the ones that are fined if they don't rectify a, a situation after being contacted by the local contact person within thirty minutes. And that fines will be paid to the city by the property manager. And, you know, we could consider that making the owner instead, but it seems like it's, it's the property manager that would be collecting any deposits and dealing with the applicant applicants and, you know, the property manager can have an agreement with the owner themselves that the owner will reimburse them if they, you know, have to pay fines. So I think they can work that out. I also rearranged the sections a little bit, separated out that definition of complaints and then added significant violations as, as the next section. And I noted that failure to report a complaint by the local contact person is a violation. And I added that failure to report two or more times is, could be a significant violation, which then you know, can eventually lead to a license being revoked. Now, that's not going to guarantee the city hears about these things, but just gives a little bit more teeth, you know, if, because the person who complained is also encouraged to follow up with the city. So if they follow up with the city, but and we find out the local contact person did not inform the city, well, then that's clearly a violation. So so those are the primary things that I added since the last meeting. So I think just continuing to review and discuss it and provide direction to staff for any additional amendments or consider recommending this to the city council.
All right, excellent. I think it's really, really getting in good shape. So, great job. Thank you for all the hard work on this, Trevor. I, Diane, what, before you returned, I said, maybe I'd like, offer you, if, do you have anything you want to add or let you go first, because you've been on the committee and I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to add about the ordinance.
Not really. I just want to make a comment, you know, when it's my turn. I think Trevor did a, a great job. I think some of it is not going to be able to happen. Occupants shall be fined if they do not rectify the situation. After being contacted by the local contact person. So the fines shall be paid to the city by the property manager. Well, there's nobody in the city Friday, Saturday and Sunday when these, a lot of these violations are going to happen. So whether the contact person or the neighbor makes the complaint, it's going to be a couple of days. And then, you know, is, is the occupant gonna leave? So it's, I don't know, it's, it's sensitive. It's a sensitive situation and I think Eli, you know, might have a a comment on that, but I think, you know, the, as far as the ordinance and the whole review, I think it, I think we're done. You know, we just need to see if we can get, get the fines, who's going to collect them and if people will do the communication. But like I said, there's nobody there Friday, Saturday and Sunday except by email and then it'll be happening on Monday. Okay, I'm done.
All right. Eli, did you want to respond? And then I'll go to Commissioner Hopkins?
Yeah. So only Saturday and Sunday, there's no one in the office. But in addition to that, as far as the fine, whatever that may be, which I, I think it might be identified as two hundred dollars. But whatever that fine is, then it's responsibility of, and what I'm going to call owner slash property manager to collect it. They can turn it into the city, you know, whenever they collect it, you know, the following Monday or depends on if they're waiting for a check from the person who rented the property. So I don't think it would be that much of an issue. And I did say property manager slash owner. I know Trevor was mentioning about the property manager, but about ten of the properties are independent and don't have a property manager. So therefore they are managed by the owner. So that's why I think the wording should be property manager and or owner. And that's all I had right offhand.
Thank you.
If anyone has any questions regarding.
I think that works. So yeah, so property manager, STR, I think it's in here as STR owner or manager. Are there any, so you're saying there are some that are both, Eli? That it might be an and condition, not just an or condition?
I, I guess what I'm saying by and or is, in other words, even the ones that have a property manager, you know, if the owner wants to collect it or take care of it, you know, who are we to choose? You know, who doesn't?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins?
Thank you for clarifying and I, I kind of agree. It sounds like it has more teeth when it says owner and property manager on it. But I was curious if the, the meet and greet actually says if there's a problem, what is done? How does, I mean, is that spelled out on the meet and greet? Like what the email is and all that stuff?
Lisa, that's my understanding. So there's a, there's a contract and, and that they have to actually initial during the meet and greet that shows all the rules and those rules say there can be fines for violating, you know, number of occupants, noise, all those different things, visitors. So they have to initial that. And I, you know, I think a lot of the idea behind this is that it's all intended to discourage bad behavior and that hopefully we don't have to implement these things. But I think the idea would be that, you know, if if a complaint isn't resolved immediately, then the local contact person will know because the complaint, complainer will call again. And so they'll immediately know that if, that this was violated, that their occupants, you know, didn't comply. So they'll know immediately that they need to collect that fine because the city is going to find out on Monday and collect the fine from them. So I think that was sort of the idea with that.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments or questions before I go to public comments? Fisher Johnson.
Thank you. Under the, and I guess we're going to change this anyway, but under property manager, STR manager, the definition that that we were talking about, currently it says property manager, STR manager means a person or entity responsible for managing STR. Maybe, maybe this goes away, maybe it's overcome by events, but I don't like the idea of an entity being the point of contact, if you will. I think if I had my choice, I would say means the persons or representative of the entity responsible for managing the STR. It sounds, it sounds like there may be some monolithic entity that somebody has to talk to, but in fact, it's really a point person. On the next page, page two. And I think this is just an administrative thing, but in the paragraph that starts, in addition to these actions, you talk about paragraph H two, and I got a little confused. I, I, I didn't think, I think that's L. I think you want to go to L two, right? On page, I think you were on page fourteen, the page twelve and page fourteen. I just got a little confused as to the numbering system there.
Where's the H two reference? Or, or are you talking about my staff report?
Yes, on page two of the staff report.
Okay. Oh, I did add clarification to the violation subsection H two. Yeah, that's, that's way off, isn't it?
Well, it's no big deal. I'm, it's just, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, it's, it should be R, R two.
Okay, it's, it's, I think it's correct in the actual ordinance. I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's, those are all ours.
Okay, you know, I know this is way downstream from where we were, but I just had this thought when I was reading this again. I wondered if this, you know, especially looking at the variability in the population of Trinidad, you know, went down sixty percent this year or in this census period. And we go to great lengths in section seventeen, five, six, one, nine, zero, E, which talks about the maximum number of short-term rentals. I really like the idea of having a total number of full-time STRs within the city limits. But I was just thinking that maybe because of the, the variability that's going on with population, et cetera, if we should not put in there that the specific STR licenses in each zone could be done by proclamation. And that way we don't have to continually change this. But again, we're way downstream. I'm not tied to that, but I just realized that maybe that would have been better had we done that by proclamation. And I think that is yeah, I think those are my comments. I think we're there.
All right, Commissioner Eli, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Richard, when he said proclamation, did he mean by resolution or what?
I'm sorry. That's what I meant.
Okay.
By resolution.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, it's too late in the evening to be thinking about this stuff.
I was gonna ask you guys to explain to me, because I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higginson?
Just really nice job, Trevor. I totally agree with clearing up the language as property manager, designated agent, something, I think that. And then going through the document and just, you know, define it in that initial section and then clean it up the rest of the way through. The rest of my concerns that I've had, you know, about closing the loop and that kind of stuff, I think are all administrative. I think Richard, you had an idea to include a, a flow chart that existed once upon a time for the complaint resolution process. I just feel like there's a lot of concern and angst and understandable churn over that issue. And if we just kind of clean that process up as a, as a city, I don't think we need to do it in the ordinance, but I just think if we fail to act on that as well, you know, that, that's not going to satisfy a lot of folks and, and scratch a lot of the itches that are out there, but that's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And I, I think it looks good. I like the definitions of the meet and greet data, the caps were updated. All of that made sense. Yeah, so I feel like we're pretty much there. Let me open to public comments and see if there are any questions or concerns from members of the public. All right, I see no questions or concerns from the public and I'm going to go ahead and recommend, do we need to make a motion to send this on to the city council? Or do we just say that we think it's ready and? And?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to make a motion, take a vote. I do want to clarify one thing that Richard asked about. I think now, are you suggesting? I, so I, I don't think that the coastal commission would allow us to change caps by resolution, but overall, but maybe if we, I could ask if, if we kept the citywide cap at 32, if then the zone caps could be changed by resolution, would they accept that? Is, is that what you were kind of thinking along the lines of?
Absolutely. Exactly. Yes.
Okay.
In other words, keep, keep the total number of STRs citywide in the ordinance, and then allow flexibility via the city council by resolution to adjust accordingly, depending upon, you know, changes in population and, and, and different dynamics in the city.
No, it makes sense to me. I mean, it makes it a little more evergreen.
I will inquire whether they think that is a possibility.
Okay. So I would move that we approve this, the short-term rental ordinance, and with the understanding that we may move the zoning numbers to a resolution. But even if we don't, we still think it's, it's ready to go to the city council. So that, I guess that's not the most articulate motion I've ever made, but.
And it sounds like you like the idea of including the definition of property manager, and then just using that throughout the document.
That is correct. Thank you. Commissioner Stockness? You're still on mute.
Peter, I'm not a.
There it is.
I'm not a real computer person. Okay. So the property manager, manager or STR manager means the person or designate instead of entity, like Richard said, responsible for managing an STR. So just add designate instead of entity. What do you think, Trevor?
Yeah, I think that works.
Yeah. Okay. That's it for me.
All right. Everybody good with that? All right. So I made a motion. Eli, go ahead.
Okay. In, in light of what Richard was talking about with our population decline, I'll just bring some of these numbers forward to you and see what, what you're, what you might be thinking. I just think it's worth looking at. And that is, currently, we've got, you know, in the total number of STRs, I believe it's approximately 20, 27, I believe. And here, we're throwing out a number of 32. I'm just saying that the current condition is that approximately 27. The, the ones in the UR are currently either 15 or 16. And in the SR, currently five. And here, we're saying to do 18 in the UR and seven in the SR. Again, those are maximums, but a lot of times, things will sort of reach out to the maximum. And if we want to try to keep this a little bit more under control, I, I personally think a number of 30, because the whole time I've been here, I, I think it, it had reached as high as 31, but usually it was 30, even though now it's, it's about 27. But usually, it's been 30. So I, I think 30 would be a good number. And I think in, in order to encourage more in the commercial and in the planned development zone, that we would have the UR maybe at a smaller number of like, let's say, 16. And the SR, you know, the current number is, is six, is, is five, actually, but six in the ordinance, the current number six. So maybe keeping that the same. But certainly, the UR, because that's been the area that, since I've been here, where most people have made any complaints, it's been in the UR, saying that that's where, you know, the homes are closer together, it's the residential area, that's where they seem to have more problems. So I, I just think it's an opportunity, since currently, we do have, I believe it's, it's either 15 or 16 in the UR. I, I think it would make sense to drop that number down to maybe 16, and then have a total max of, of 30. So anyway, that's a suggestion I'm making.
All right. Thank you. I, I'd be fine with that. Commissioner Higginson, I think you were gonna make a comment, though, before we, no? Okay. Is everybody fine with that change in numbers? Trevor, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think the more we reduce, like, the UR is clearly where the demand is. And if we reduce that, you know, it's just gonna make it harder to get through the coastal commission. You know, we have a lot of people on the waitlist that have been waiting, you know, and now they're, now is they're finally there, they have an opportunity, and we're gonna cut them out of, of an opportunity to get the lottery. And I think that's gonna make some people mad. And I just, you know, I, I just don't see it as the easiest path forward. May, maybe there wouldn't be any hurdles with it, but, you know, I think, I think the, you know, people are making, you know, this population drop thing. You know, again, if you, if you look at the decades of data, between 1980, 1990, 2000, population dropped, 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 when there were no vacation rentals. And then vacation rentals came on the scene, exploded between 2000 and 2010. That's when the population went way up. So, you know, I, I don't, you know, what, what we've been talking about is a percentage of housing units, not, not populations. So, you know, I, it, it's up to you guys. I just think that the, you know, I don't want to have to fight a bunch through the coastal commission with this.
All right. Well, then I'm gonna hold, let's hold on that and have a little more discussion. I, I think Diane wants to weigh in for a while.
So I, I agree with Trevor that we need to keep it where it is right now. And the reason it's down, besides the population decline, is because of the COVID. And people aren't out and about, but the ones that always come are still here. And more will come, because that's what people do now, is they go, they go to STRs. My friend in Willow Creek cannot, she's tried to take hers offline, and people keep bugging her, bugging her, bugging her, bugging her, that they want to get in, they'll pay, whatever. So I would, I would leave it at what Trevor did. And then, you know, if it's down right now, Eli, that's fine. I think we just need to go with the flow and leave this, you know, at where it is, and then, you know, see what the, see what the council says. But I think what we've got right now is sufficient, and I'd rather just go with, you know, that, because I think the coastal commission will want us to have visitor services. And that's how we get a lot of our money. And if we've got all the rules, everything will be great. Okay.
All right. I made a motion a while ago to move this to the city council. Would anybody like to second that or make another, another motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. Again, Trevor, thank you for all the hard work on this. This really came together. And Diane, for leading us, representing us with the STR committee. Thanks for all your guys are doing.
Okay.
Really appreciate it.
Now, we, we need the city council to appreciate all of our work.
They do.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner reports. Are there any report outs? All right. Seeing none. It is back to you, Trevor. Staff report. Is there anything you wanted to cover off with us?
Still have, still have some applications trickling in that are getting the additional information. So we might have something, an application on the September agenda. Eli and Ross and Gabe and I met to talk about enforcement, since that's been kind of a a spot that the city's been lacking in. So I think we're gonna, we, we've got a plan and, and try and do more of that. I actually have had a little bit of time this week to work on the general plan update. I didn't have time to work on the ADU ordinance for this agenda, but I'll have that on the next agenda again. I'll be here for the next meeting, but then I'm gonna be out of town for the last two weeks of September. I think that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's talk about future agenda items, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hopkins?
Oh, it's a future agenda item, I guess.
Okay.
I, I've been getting questions about Launter Beach. Like, is, is that gonna be, people think it's gonna be closed. And I, I just, I'm just curious if whatever is known out there in regards to Launter Beach.
I'm not aware of anything. The only thing they may, might be talking about during the project, but the stormwater.
Like, it was gonna go to private ownership with one of the tribes, or it's not gonna be available to the beach, to launch a beach, the boats anymore. Is this, is this just a story that's being told around town?
I think it's just a rumor. I don't, I think there, you know, the, the rancheria is in the process of, of putting that harbor property into trust, which means it would no longer be in city or coastal commission jurisdiction. And there certainly is a worry that access could be affected. But I, you know, I don't really think it's, it's in the rancheria's best interest to do so. There is a, a public easement to the pier. Certainly, everything below the high tide line is public. And the Galindo Street right-of-way does run into Launter Beach. So, you know, I know there's, there is, you know, some, some movement towards trying to come up with a plan to close that trail. But that doesn't mean the easement, that the right-of-way is gonna go away. So if the, if the rancheria did try and close off access, that right-of-way does exist, and it goes on to Launter Beach.
Thank you. I just said I would ask. So, thank you.
So one of the things I was gonna say is, I thought we took the West Haven CSD intertie off, because that was moved, I think, to the water advisory committee. Is that what you remembered, Richard? And Trevor? Okay, Trevor's nodding. I thought we took that off, and we decided they could work on that. And then there's been some discussion there. The tsunami siren update, are we still trying to get that? Or I guess we'll leave it on there? Yes, Diane's saying yes. Okay. And then, I'm afraid I've forgotten what TMP incorporation is, and to the GP, I can't remember what TMP is.
Uh, TRM, Management Plan.
Oh, of course. I don't know why that acronym just doesn't stick for me. And it's an important one. I'm sorry. Okay. And then I wanted to recognize, Commissioner Stockness wanted to add something.
Well, I wanted to go back to the priority list. And, you know, I think the STR is done, update. And then, I don't know, for, the water committee seems to be on a roll to get that done. And we've been talking about housing and ADUs. So I'd like to kind of clean up all those little priorities and get back to the general plan. Because we, we really need to get done with that. And, you know, get the permit, the people that want permits, get them in there, get details of what they want, and we can just say yes or no at one of the meetings. We don't need to keep putting them off. And I think, you know, the rancheria is really doing a good job getting their, their projects on and, and you know, they've, they've got a lot of information that we can use and, and, okay. I just think the applications for permits need to be looked at, and then I am concerned about that one, the old church. And the art sign that's up. So I don't know if that has to do with us, Trevor, or, or what, but, you know, that, that bothers me.
Yeah, so, you know, I think, so basically, they just replaced the sign that was there with a new sign. Change in sign copy. You know, I, I think if you read the city's code, it could be argued that change in sign copy requires design review, that we don't generally, you know, signs change in, in businesses, change in the Saunders Shopping Center, and we haven't reviewed all those signs. They did submit some information to me in terms of, you know, what, what they plan on doing, and how many people, and how often. They do have, apparently, they say they have permission from the school to use the parking lot in the off-hours. So I am, I am reviewing that to see if it needs a, a use permit or, or coastal development permit as a change of use. It's, you know, what, what they're doing is, is similar to the kinds of activities that were occurring when it was a church. So I'll be taking a look at that. And then they do also have an application in to rezone that property, but I'm waiting for some additional information from them on that.
So that'll be coming up soon?
It depends on when they can get me the information. I actually, I'm, the, the church on Berry Road, I'm, I'm getting close, I think, to having everything I need to bring that rezone to you. It's basically the same thing. It's a PR to, well, actually, no, that one's PR to SR, suburban residential. So actually, a little easier, I think. For the, for the PD zone, it's a whole new set of uses that would be allowed, so a little bit more analysis will be required for that.
Well, you know, because the school's gonna start, and the traffic's gonna get, you know, intense there in the parking lot. So I would feel comfortable if that we got that information and we could get going on that, because it's on Main Street in the city. So whatever you can do, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Higginson?
Just to mirror, I was approached by two members of the community about that same location, just that it's in use now as something other than a church, as this art center. And people are just concerned, or just interested in, in what that would or wouldn't trigger, whether it can be used for something different in the interim, or how that kind of works. So I don't know if there's any way to bring back just a little quick synopsis on that for us, just so we have talking points or something to share. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, it can be that. And like I said, I, I just received that, their little packet last week, I, I think when I dropped off the, the planning commission packet. You know, it's another one where, you know, the, the coastal act defines a, a change in use as development. But again, they say in the, in the Saunders Shopping Center, you know, what a, a place went from wine tasting to pizza, or from an office to wine ta, you know, those businesses have changed, and we haven't required a use permit, because they're all principally permitted uses. Again, I think it could be argued that a permit is required, but it's not, it's not what we've done in the past. And, you know, and our ordinances are a little old, and sometimes a little tough, tough to deal with. And, you know, sometimes you could argue both, both sides of that. So, you know, it does seem like what they're proposing is pretty consistent with, you know, the size and the type of events that have occurred as a church. Although I think, I think the one exception might be the music performances. So, yeah, again, I'm, I need to take a look at that a little more in depth, and I will, I will bring you back a summary if you. And I will, I will bring you back a summary if you don't get the permit, at least.
Okay, because, because the parking is, is an issue, you know, and it's gonna be the same with, when school starts and then there's the beachcomber. And a lot of the parking are out of town people. All right, I beat that up, you know, thank you.
So, yeah, I second Diane's comment about the general plan. We knew we had such a long list of things we needed to accomplish this year. And it's a lot of load for you, Trevor, and for the planning commission also. And so it's just one of these things where I think at some point, we have to decide if the general plan is a priority for us all collectively. If it's really a priority, and if it is, we, we need to get it done. And I'm not exactly sure how to do that yet, but I think that's something that we should, we should talk about. More about just like the how, how, how to move it from point A to point B, point Z.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree. I think, I think, you know, right, right now, it's more in, in, in staff's hands. I'm not sure what I could bring to you. So we've got, you know, the planning commission has reviewed and kind of given their blessing. I don't know if you actually made motions or recommendations on those, I forget, but the introduction, the land use conservation circulation. But what I'm doing right now is responding to all the Coastal Commission comments on those. And, and I'm almost done. I, I have, you know, all the responses in the document. I've, what I'm working on this week is, is finishing up my written response. And then I think the last piece is the figures. And we do have a little bit of a bottleneck with our GIS person, but I'm starting to get, get some figures. I, it's interesting, I kind of had to go back to scratch to even just do city limits. So I, Richard, so remember, Richard, you brought up the question about the LAFCO's map and of the city's harbor area and the city's map is one question. And then the other question is, our, our current city limit line is based on that US Meander Line, which is well above high-tide line and well above the property. And our current LCP map shows zoning all the way down to the high-tide line. Basically, it, it shows those beach areas. So I thought, okay, well, we have to, we actually have to adjust our outer city limit line. So we used, we were able to use some, some current LiDAR data to pick up the high-tide line. So we're basing the outer city limit on, on that high-tide line. And then I dug up the actual description of the area of the harbor that was granted to the city, and it matches the LAFCO map. So it's been, it's been our maps that have been off all these years. And LAFCO's and the county's maps are, are correct. It's actually a much larger area of the harbor than we've had maps. So, so that's interesting, but then, you know, then it means we have to update all our other maps. But, but yeah, so I'm, I'm working through that. And then, you know, and I can't jump into the, the public safety element yet, really, until, because we've got that OPC grant that's gonna do the hazards planning. So I think it would be a little bit premature to jump back into that. There is the community design element. That might be a good one, because we're also supposed to be working on with the SB2 grant or objective design standards. So that might be a good one. The other one is the cultural resources element. And that one, we need to get back to consultation and, and, and work with the tribal entities on, on that before I bring that back to the planning commission. So, so it's a lot of sort of staff background work right now. Yeah, maybe we can, maybe we can work on the community design element later this year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for the update. Anything else for agenda items, Commissioner Stockness?
So we didn't get the minutes from the July 21 meeting. So that's coming next time?
And the June 28th, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, I guess there were two of them. So, and then our prize worker changed jobs. So it's probably after time or after her other job, she gets all those done. Okay.
Yeah, so, so she's here. Hi, Angela.
Hello.
Angie.
Hi, thanks for your patience, everyone.
Okay, I just was curious. And now I, I even forgot about the 28th. Okay.
Yeah, there's one.
June 28th and then July 21, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I see no other hands raised. I think we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, everyone, and Angela especially.
Yes, Angela.
We miss you.
Bye-bye.